Good evening, everyone. Great to see everybody this evening. We have a full house and a call to order the June 24th, 2024 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cassali?
Here.
Mr. Oppone is absent this evening. Mr. Luray?
Here.
Chairman Moffett is absent. Acting Chair Mr. Turner will be our chairman tonight.
Here.
And I am present as well. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First item is approval of the agenda. If I don't have any changes or additions, deletions, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, approval of our minutes from the June 10th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This evening we have three items, two site plans and one rezoning public hearing. First item on the agenda is Site Plan Number 24-09, Simon Morrow. It's a vacant parcel located on the south side of 26 Mile Road west of Van Dyke, proposed office building. Applicant here? Come on up. Please let us know what it is you're proposing for this corner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tom Callis. Just here. And I'm the attorney for the applicant, Simon Morrow. My address is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, and that's in Bingham Farms, Michigan. So the property is located on the south side of 26 Mile and just west of Van Dyke. We're proposing a 30, approximately 30,000 square foot professional office building, two stories. We will need a variance. We do exceed the two-story height requirement by a foot or so, a couple of feet. So we are aware of that. We did submit our site plan. It's gone through departmental reviews by the township, the Planner Department also. We did receive comments. We submitted revised site plan addressing those comments. We feel that we have met the ordinance requirements for the site plan approval. This property is zoned office, so it is a permitted use. And if we have, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. We also have our client representative engineer here in case there's any site issues. So we're here to answer any questions. Again, it's a permitted use. We feel we've met all the ordinance requirements and we would ask, kindly ask for a approval of the site plan this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Julie, we'll kick it over to you first for your review.
Thank you, Chairman. As Mr. Callis indicated, they had gone through a site plan preliminary review on this, on this site. They met all the requirements that are noted in your site plan review comments with the exception of the height of the building and also parking. Now, they are providing land bank parking to the south of this site beyond the drain that's there. However, I just would recommend that a note is placed on the plan that if the parking, the land bank parking is constructed in the future, that appropriate screening and buffers are provided for that southern property line.
Sure. No problem.
Yeah, as far as the height of the building, just to make a note, the Planning Commission is typically recommends approval or denial to the zoning board of appeals for such variances. So I just want to clarify that in this district, 18 feet is the maximum height, but honestly, it, I believe it's probably a discrepancy or something that we'd have to review in, for ordinance amendments in that single-family residential homes are allowed up to 35 feet in height and the building LA Fitness to the south is 37 feet in height. They also received a variance because their parapet walls exceed that height restriction. So it doesn't make sense in that this 01 office district has a lesser height requirement of 18 feet than their budding uses.
I have one question, Julie. It's on the land bank. You've got a notation, "The Planning Commission could approve this proposal if the site plan note that the land bank parking shall be installed at the discretion of the township." So how would that work? Would we notify him they've got to put him in or how would that work?
So if parking becomes an issue at this site, typically we would hear from, you know, patrons of that center. But typically these, these buildings are overparked because we take in consideration the footprint of the building from the interior walls. So this includes bathrooms. This includes hallways. So like I said, sometimes we're overparked in these sites and I would rather see green space than, than parking lot. So he would, the applicant would put a note on the plan indicating that in the event that more additional parking is required, that it would have to be installed at the discretion of the township and that, like I said, the buffer would have to be installed between the residential properties to the south.
Okay. Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Snyder?
Move to approve Site Plan 24-09, Simone Morrow, Morrow Engineering, vacant parcel number 230704201010, located on the south side of 26 Mile Road west of Van Dyke Avenue for an office building based on applicant addressing Planning Commission, Department, and Engineering comments and offering support for building height variance.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Snyder, supported by Commissioner Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callis. Item number two is a site plan number 21-07, Mario Algenio, 53174 Van Dyke Avenue, located north of 24 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke, Gigi Dental Modification. Is the applicant here? I'm assuming that's coming right up. Name and address, please.
Yeah. Good evening. Andy Wakeland with Giffords Webster, the Site Civil Designer, address 6303 26 Mile Road, Washington, Michigan. And just let me get my presentation started here.
No problem.
Perfect. All right. So if, if I may, I'll kind of walk you through the background of the site, what we're proposing. Obviously, this is Dr. Gigi Algenio's family dental, 24 and Van Dyke Road. It's a parking and building expansion, a very small building expansion. Moving on, I'll talk about the development team. Obviously, I have Dr. Gigi and her father Mario is with me here today. The construction and property manager, Michael Thornton, is with me. The architect, Peter DeLeo with Deanna Associates could not be here this evening. So the project obviously is Dr. Gigi's dental, but it's the entire building which they're kind of renaming to Plaza de la Luz. Obviously, Dr. Gigi's been a dentist in the area, been in Shelby Township since 2011 and just kitty-corner to this project, southwest corner of 24 and Van Dyke. So she wanted to build her own building. We came in before you, just a little while ago, was that 2021 August that we were approved by the Planning Commission to build this building? We worked through permits. We had our pre-construction meeting back in July of 2022. She had one construction manager that was working on the project. Things didn't work out, so now she has a different one and, you know, moving forward. Obviously, the original plan had a 3,725 square foot dental office on the first floor. That's the footprint of the building. And then the plan at the time was for two apartments residential above that. So that would have required 28 parking spaces, plus we had an additional two land bank spaces. So our proposal is to convert the second floor to a shared office business center. They would reconfigure the small portion of the first floor in order to add in a vestibule so that you can get to the second floor easier. And then we would be adding an emergency access stair to the back of the site. You can kind of see the area that we're working on there in the picture, but there's an exterior stair where relocating the existing dumpster that's on site. And the two parking spaces that were formerly banked are going where that dumpster was located. There's an elevator that is being added to the building. That's the building addition. And then we had to do a few sidewalk modifications to get into the vestibule. I'm right here, I have a quick snapshot of the interior on the first floor. You can see on the lower right-hand corner where they're adjusting the interior features so that we can add in that vestibule, get to the elevator and up to the second floor. And here's the modification to the second floor. Obviously, the, the overall shell of the building is built, but now we can go back in and kind of build out the second floor to be that shared office business center. So we're adding the rear stair for the emergency egress to this second floor. So the business center, it's going to be fully furnished. It has nine different offices, a shared receptionist and lobby, shared answering service, shared mail service, shared conference room and restrooms. That's kind of like your financial consultant or your real estate agent that needs a professional office occasionally. They don't need it all the time, so they're in and out, not there, you know, nine to five. They're there occasionally. So I just wanted to briefly go through these. Number one, the exterior egress stair you can see that's added to the back of the building. And that would be like an open grated stair so that the snow can go through, no issues there. Number two is the trash enclosure. That would match what was previously approved for material. And it's just moving about 20 feet unfortunately, but that's how it works. Number three is adding the parking spaces where that trash enclosure was. And then number four is to add the elevator to the back of the building. You can see it does stick up a few more feet from the overall building height, but really not even noticeable from the road. And it would match the exterior of the building that's currently built. Number five is the sidewalk modifications. That would be the sidewalk in front of the parking on the south side of the building. We had to adjust some grades in order to get the ADA accessible route in order to work to get into the vestibule, adding a railing there as well just to keep everyone safe. And then number six is the vestibule. That's an interior modification. I just want to quickly go through the elevations here. And that's it. So thank you. Let me know. I'll be here if you have any questions.
Okay. Julie, go ahead and do your review.
Thank you, Chairman. So as Mr. Wakeland noted, that this came before you guys for a dental office back a few years ago. At that time, there was just a preliminary discussion as far as the use of the second floor, but there was nothing set in stone. And we knew that when they had a proposal for the second floor, that they would be back before us. So here we are. As far as the parking calculations, again, this is another situation where we measure the interior of the building from side to side and come up with the calculations. Now, from Mr. Wakeland's computations, they took office spaces that they took in consideration. They eliminated, again, storage rooms, lavatories, hallways, and this is how they came up with their parking needs. Now, I don't have any objections to this, but in this case as well, I, I don't want parking to be an issue, especially, you know, that I feel like we've maximized this site. If there's an opportunity to add a few more land bank spaces, maybe we can research that. But I really don't have any objections to the plans as he's proposed. Now, there is one comment that was made by the Department of Public Works that the elevator is on top of the storm sewer. So I, I don't know if you had had conversations with the Department of Public Works, but that may be kind of a hurdle that you'll have to take care of.
Yeah. If I can address that, that's one of the downspouts from the building. So we would simply reroute that around the building.
That's all it is?
That's all it is. So it is, but.
Now, that's easier than it sounded initially, so that looks pretty good.
Yes. My heart skipped a beat when I heard it as well, so yeah.
Anybody have any questions for the planner or the developer? Hearing, yeah, Jim, go ahead.
As far as the parking goes, there's consideration given to, you know, areas of the building that aren't actually maybe people, stairways, storage unit, storage rooms and whatnot. And I noticed one of your stairwells is going on the exterior of the building. So I'm not sure if that, that square footage is calculated into the parking, but something I noticed.
Yeah. No, that wouldn't be counted into the parking calculation.
Okay. Correct.
Is that it, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? If not, motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Snyder?
Move to approve Site Plan 21-07, Mario Algenio, MGA LUZ Inc., 53174 Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 230710354015, located north off 24 Mile on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue for Gigi Dental. Site plan modification based on the applicant submitting revised plans addressing all Planning Commission, engineers, and department comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Snyder, supported by Commissioner Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Get that downspout moved and you're all set, okay?
Thank you very much.
Last item on our agenda is a conditional rezoning and a site plan special land use number 24-14, Mason Simona, 13555 24 Mile Road LLC, located on the northwest corner of 24 Mile Road in Shaner. Rezoning from R1A, single-family residential, to C2, linear retail business, four proposed gas station and car wash. This is a public hearing. I'll ask Secretary Moore to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, McComb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following conditional rezoning and site plan special land use petition. Applicant, Mason Simona, 13555 24 Mile Road LLC, 1100 West Maple Road, Troy, Michigan, 48084, proposed zoning and use, rezoning from R1A, one-family residential, to C2, linear retail business, proposed gas station and car wash. Location, 13555 and 13419 24 Mile Road, northwest corner of 24 Mile Road in Shaner Road. Conditional rezoning petition and site plan special land use 24-15, Sidwell number 23-07-11-400-015 Legal description is as follows below. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, June 24th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Township Municipal Building, Boardroom 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316-5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning and site plan special land use application. The application for the conditional rezoning and site plan special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on June 5th, 2024. There were 45 property owners, three applicants, and nine utilities were notified by first-class mail on June 4th, 2024.
Thank you, Raquel. Mr. Kirk, does the notice meet all legal requirements as stipulated in local ordinances and state statute?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any, do you have any questions of the attorney? Raquel, I am assuming we got some correspondence on this, correct?
We sure did, Mr. Chair. We received over, I think it was 170 pieces of correspondence via email, and they were all in opposition to this proposed rezoning and request.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair. There was one that was in favor of this rezoning.
For the record, there was one. It was in favor for the rezoning, so, okay.
I must miss that.
Thanks. I missed it too, so I appreciate that. Okay. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner and/or his representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will then be open to the public for your comments. Come on down, tell us what you think of this. And then the petitioner will be called back up to make any concluding remarks. I'm assuming petitioner's here, he's ready to make his presentation, so go ahead, name and address for the record, sir. Make sure you sign in afterwards, too.
Will do, yes. My name is Rob Zora on behalf of 1355 24 Mile Road LLC, which is the applicant here. This is an application for rezoning of two parcels over at the corner of 24 Mile and Shaner. Those addresses are 13419 and 13555 24 Mile Road. I did exchange a few emails earlier today with, with the township attorney and also Ms. Misich, and I was, at the outset, I'd like to request that we, I know there's a large turnout for today's agenda item, but we request that we table this item until the July 22nd Planning Commission meeting. So what, I just, my office just received the Planning Commission's review and comment today at 1:25 PM. And so we did, I did have a chance just to review it very briefly, and there are a number of items that were listed on, by the, by the department for revision for the site plan application and the site plan itself. So I would like the opportunity to go back to our engineer and architect and address some of those outstanding issues that were identified in the, in the Planning Commission's, Planning Department's comment. I know I did hear some of the other applicants today were afforded that opportunity and were allowed to submit a revised plan following comment and report of the Planning Commission. So like I said, I do, I do see that there's quite the turnout, but I would request that we table this until July 22nd if the commission is inclined.
Well, with all due respect, I hear what you're saying, but I can tell you, based on the energy in the room, I can see why you may want to postpone this. But I can tell you, based on the energy in the room, I disagree. We should postpone this. Okay. This has been advertised. Notices have been sent out. It's been reviewed by the Planning Commission and it's been reviewed by our planner. It's really not our problem if the attorney that you had decided to quit. We're here, we have a plan. It's been reviewed by everybody up here. It's been reviewed by our planner. And I don't think it would matter who necessarily is here making the presentation because we have the plan. It's detailed. We know exactly what it is you're proposing for that corner. So, Mr. Kirk, we have the right to proceed under regular order, right? Have a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is ask, we're going to proceed, and I'm going to ask if you have a presentation to make, or was, maybe that was your presentation, I don't know, but make your presentation. We can ask questions and then we'll proceed from there.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay proceeding if the commission's inclined not to grant that adjournment. So like the application states, you know, this is a rezoning from R1A to C2 for that corner. There's two lots, residential to commercial. I'd like to address maybe at the outset some of the, what I would probably perceive to be some public concern, so.
Why don't you tell us what it is you're proposing for the corner and then we can get into, I'm sure we'll get into the debate on what's
Sure.
some of the drawbacks of it are. But why don't you tell us what it is first that you're proposing?
Sure. The proposal is to construct, well, there's two residential homes on the properties right now, one in each lot. The proposal is to, to tear down those two homes and join the lots at one point or another and build a gas station, fueling station, and then another building for a car wash. The latter requires a special land use application as well, so that's also on the agenda for today. So the commission has, has seen the proposal. Some of the highlights, I think, that may be relevant here is, is that we, there are, of course, residential neighborhoods in the north of the property. Our plans will include a very large masonry wall along that northern border of the property. It'll be aesthetically pleasing. It'd be premium quality construction. We're also proposing to build just in front of that wall, 12-foot evergreens that will line the property as well so that from the, at least from the north, the visibility to the south will be as minimal as possible. The proposal includes one additional driveway that would be on 24 Mile Road as opposed to both corners there. And then there is a 24-foot buffer from the northern residential area to the construction to the south there. So we do think we will, you know, it'll be a minimal noise and visual obstruction, we think, to the, to the neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any questions we can. Unfortunately, our engineer and architect isn't here today, but certainly if we do get it tabled to July 22nd, he will be present for that.
I guess we would have a difference of opinion on what minimal impact would be, but let me ask you a question.
Sure.
You're proposing, in my opinion, a drastic change for that property for what's there now. Would you not agree to that? From R1A to C2, that's a pretty drastic change, right?
I mean, it certainly is a change of use for absolutely.
It's a dras, it's not just a change, it's a drastic change. Let me ask you a question. Can it be developed as R1A?
Can it be developed?
Yeah. Can it be developed? It's an easy question.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Yeah.
It can?
As
Was that a yes, it can, or yes?
Do you mean by, for our purposes, or do you mean generally for anyone?
Can you develop it as presently zoned, R1A?
If, if the owner was inclined to do so, it would be, it would be within the zoning, yes.
If he was inclined to do so.
That's correct.
So that means it can be developed as R1A. You just mentioned that there would be some, I mean, in the, I guess, you know what, I've got a lot of comments on this. Maybe we'll just, I'll wait on that for a second, so. Does anybody have any questions for petitioner?
Yeah.
Nope. Not yet. We're going to go to the pub. I'm, I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. We'll get there in a second. We'll get there in a second. So anybody have any questions before we go to the public? All right. You can have a seat, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to open to the public. What I would ask is you to come down orderly. I know you want to be first, so come on down. When you come down, give us your name and address for the record at the podium, and then when you're done, sign in. Now, I would preface it by saying this. There's a lot of people here tonight. We want to give everybody who wants to speak a chance to speak. Bear in mind, we have 170, I've never gotten that many, 170 emails, letters, and a petition. So we know the general flavor of the people in the area. And what I would say is this developer, I would give him credit for this. He's managed to unite residents in the north, the south, the east, and the west. Even people as far away as the southwest corner down where I live in Ryan and Auburn area are opposed to this. So we know, we've got a good idea on what, how the public feels, but again, you have a right to speak. I'm not going to stop you from speaking. So, sir, you're eager to join in? Give us your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
My name is Robert Thomas, and I live at 52879 Tuscany Grove here in Shelby. And first of all, I want everybody to know that I moved my family to Shelby back in 1987 and raised six children in Banister Lake subdivision. And the wife and I wanted to continue into Shelby because of all the acoustics and the things that go on here. And so we decided to move to 24 Mile to the Tuscany Grove subdivision, and that was in 2005. And since that time And since that time, we've had a number of things change from residential in that area, the corners, to office buildings and a restaurant and dentist offices and that. And I want to ask the commission here if you've done another study on traffic, because traffic is abominable at rush hour traffic in the morning and at night, and if you aren't aware, but most of your subdivisions on that mile road open with only one entrance exit. Tuscany Grove and the one to the north of us, two of them on the north of us, and I know on the east side of Shainer, the same thing applies, where there's a subdivision that only has one entrance exit. And my point is that the traffic, and they're so close to the corner, that it's terrible. We have elderly people, I'm one of them, that could need emergency services, and with the traffic we have today, it's bad enough, and I think a car wash and gas station is only going to add to that, cause slowdowns and other things. So, I mentioned that, I mentioned you need to do another traffic study and make sure that that is handled properly before anything gets approved like this. And I would ask the person trying to put up a gas station, how many gas stations are in the immediate area? I mean, I count eight at least within a two-mile radius of where I live at 24 and Shainer, and I don't think we need another gas station or even a car wash, we've got plenty of them. So, thank you for.
Thank you. I would say to your point about traffic studies, anybody that drives the area, everybody in here does their own traffic study every time they drive, so it's pretty clear. Sir, did you sign in? Make sure you sign in for us, Raquel will get mad. Go ahead and sign in, thank you.
Hi, my name is Angie Winningham. I live at 53175 Shainer. I'm about two doors down from the proposed change. I did send a detailed email on the 22nd to the commission outlining my specific concerns and why I personally do not support this rezoning, but I wanted to take the opportunity to just highlight a couple more, especially when looking at the Shelby Township standards for special land use, I know that's only part of this, but echoing what the person before me said, you know, they weren't ordered or they weren't numbered on the special land use, so I'm just going to refer to them in the order that they're presented, so like items number 2, 5, 7, and 8 specifically. 2, related to the traffic patterns, as the gentleman before me said, I have two young children, we bike, there's no sidewalks, the traffic is already horrendous trying to get in and out of my driveway, but I can't imagine, especially with a large wall which will only obstruct viewing even more, to be able to navigate traffic. Item number 5, talking about a need for service, a quick Google search can tell you, within a five-mile radius, there are 14 car washes and over 25 gas stations within a five-mile radius. I did, you know, very quickly just look at that, so I do not see that that meets the threshold for a need of service for our township. Number 7, public safety and welfare and for the protection of the neighbors, I have concerns about catastrophic issues happening at a gas station, chemicals used in a car wash, and how that could impact not only myself and my family, but my neighbors. Lastly, number 8, talking about injury to the value of the home. Obviously, we bought our house on a corner, we're friends with our neighbors who grew up in that home, it was their childhood home, we know the history of the land, they're here tonight, too, I saw them walk in, and I just don't think that it will add value to my personal property adjacent to there. I'm a local resident, I support continued growth and improvement of our area, I am all for making positive changes, I just do not feel at this time that this benefits our community, our neighborhoods, nor does it meet the threshold for special use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, one second, I did neglect to read one thing, let me read it, get it on the record. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body, the Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making their final decision on the rezoning. Now, anyone in the audience wishes to speak, which you have, so, ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Sorrello, and for 20 years, I've lived in Pondview Estates at 53425 Pondview Drive. My street is one-half block away from the proposed gas station car wash project. I do not support the rezoning of the residential properties on the northwest corner of 24 Mile to C2 because it will absolutely devalue my property. Building such structures will increase traffic, which is already a challenge on 24 Mile and Shainer. The noise associated with the gas station and a car wash is not suitable for a residential area. Even more important is the negative impact the project will have on the aesthetics of the corner. There are approximately nine gas stations and seven car washes in close proximity of 24 Mile and Shainer. We do not need more. The mission of Shelby Township Government is to serve the interests of the residents by providing an environment that enhances the quality of life in our community. Adding another car wash and gas station will only diminish the area and not serve its residents. I have two 28-year-old daughters who say every time they come home to visit, the area around their childhood home looks more and more unrecognizable. I moved to Shelby for the trees and the calm, not for the strip malls and the gas stations on every corner. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little short.
That's all right, yep. Good evening.
My name is Maureen Nemec. I live at 14241 Middlebury Court, and I'll make sure I don't repeat things that other people had said, obviously, there's kind of the same kind of information. I am in disagreement with the zoning change and have compiled some relative facts to substantiate my position. As other has mentioned, within a five-mile radius of the proposed gas station are 15 other car washes, that was, that was pretty easy. From the Trade Association, International Car Wash Association, there are more than 80,000 professional car washing establishments, and 8 million vehicles are washed every day with an average of 100 cars. Based on Shelby's township population of 78,408 and 31,581 households, there may be 31,581 vehicles to be washed, recognizing, you know, some people have more than one car. Based on the car washes that already exist, they have the capacity to wash 547,500 vehicles if they were open 365 days a year, and on the average, I had received the information that 66% of people wash their cars 13 times a year, which is about one wash per month, so that estimation is about 315,000. If we add another 200,000 for the Coleman Washington, which is the five-mile radius, the current market would be saturated, which would mean now you've got a whole supply and demand. Based on pages 21, 20, and 21 of the 2017 master plan, under the retail corridor goals is to improve the alignment between supply and demand as well as to limit new commercial development. So you're asked to consider that this would increase the supply over demand. The other concern that I have is because car washes are discretionary, as the economy slows, we would expect that many would stop their subscriptions. The clean wash on Shainer cost about $5 million to build, last year charged $17 a month for their subscription, and is now at $35 a month. I personally have a subscription there, and I can tell you that there's much less volume now than there was previously. Car washes are water-intensive, using 88, 38 gallons per wash, based on the International Car Wash Association documentation I found online, and most advertise that they use clean water. We are currently under rules to limit watering our lawn to water changes, so allowing a business which is basically in the water usage business does not appear to be in line with the township water direction. So it would appear that an additional car wash has the real possibility of failing. This type of facility would not be easily converted into another type of facility, the closed car wash at BP on the corner of 23 Mile and Shainer is now only used for storage. In regards to the gas station being proposed, the challenge is that it is also commercial, which is within the dense residential area. The gas station would be very close in proximity. The National Center for Biotechnology Information article, PMC 3222489, notes that there is significant air quality hazard with an increased risk of adverse health outcomes for gas stations. This is the reason that gas stations are normally located in areas with a substantial retail and industrial buffer. These types of gas stations often require overhead canopy lights, perimeter lights, and signage. Lights village from the gas station fixtures will intrude into nearby residential areas, causing discomfort, annoying, and even health issues for inhabitants and wildlife. It can also create glare and visible disturbances for drivers, potentially compromising road safety. In this area of Shelby Township, there is no other commercial units with substantial lighting. The retail development on the south side was designed with nominal lighting, and businesses are not open 24 hours a day, so the lighting requirements are much less intrusive. If we remember correctly, the Speedway at 23 Mile and M53 was denied lighting improvements due to the adverse impact of the residential community surrounding it.
Sign in. Did you sign in, ma'am? Ma'am, did you sign in?
Maureen.
You did sign in? Okay, good. What should I forget? Yeah, so, one second. Sorry, go ahead.
Judy Gazardo. 49865 Sander Drive, Shelby Township. My, I am in Golden Lakes subdivision, which is between 22 and 23, right off of Shainer, so I do have an interest too in this. Shelby Township listens to its citizens, I've had experience with them. Shelby Township believes in government by the people, for the people. We are against another gas station where there is already the one they mentioned on 23, the BP, and the Meyer Gas on 24 and Hayes, which are really close to us. Do we need a massage parlor, a car wash, and a gas station on every corner? This proposal will not fill a dire need. This proposal will adversely affect the quality of life and of home values in the area. If this is allowed, we have recourse. Do not patronize the business, money talks.
Thank you, make sure you sign in.
John Olson, address is 52387 Woodside Court, Shelby. For the gas station, I totally disagree with the gas station, and my reason is, I work for a beer company, so I travel every single day to probably 52 accounts a week, which are all gas stations, party stores, and seeing new gas stations go up in every area, from Rochester, to Shelby, to Warren, it's been nothing but problems, hangouts, more drug increasing, and since 2022, the study shows across the United States that every new gas station and convenience store has gone up, crime in the gas station has jumped 4.5%, with robberies jumping up 1.3%. So nothing's going to stop this corner for anyone coming from the south side, east side, west side, anywhere to cause problems. I see it every day with my job, and every time there's a new gas station, it's great for the first couple of months, first year, and then everything starts, you know, you get more crime, you got people stealing out of the stores, doing, not paying for the gas, peeling out of the gas station, fighting with each other. So I've seen for five years, I witnessed new gas stations and what the repercussions are of these. So I definitely say no to this gas station, I think it's going to cause more problems than it's going to do anything good.
Okay, thanks, make sure you sign in. Anyone else? Come on down, sir.
Yeah, my name's Sean Keys, I live at 12381 24 Mile Road, right across the street from the beautiful new DTE substation. So, I've been a 30-year resident in that particular house. I have site plan, or the zoning plan, all the way back from Van Havel days, and in the board that took over after Van Havel, they rescinded a lot of that. And I've lived in Shelby Township about 53 of my 61 years. I grew up on Brentwood, so I've seen a lot of changes in Shelby, and an awful lot of changes right in front of my house the last five years. Now, I'm not going to be able to put it any more eloquently than these people did on why you don't want a gas station or a car wash, but now let me tell you what it's like living across the street from the storage facility, the Shelby Underground, Green Giant, all that little businesses are right there, and more are going to go in from my hearing, and the property that is in between the residential house, well, was residential, dead owner died, it's sold, now it's a roofing company. I hear beep beep so damn much, I hear it in my sleep, because...
I don't want to interrupt you, but let's stay focused on this property.
I am, I am, because
I know what you're talking about, go ahead.
these people are going to hear that, no.
Oh, you mean at the, at the gas station, you'll hear that?
They're going to hear it at the gas station, they're going to hear it at the, at the car wash, they're going to hear all kinds of stuff through the night, trust me, I know it, I hear it, I live it. In fact, anyways, so you really need to understand what rezoning that piece of property, it's like a gateway to open up when the greenhouse sells. I mean, you, the board, and our township supervisor keep telling me how, don't worry, north side of 24 is always going to stay residential, but then all of a sudden, I watch as everything gets chipped away and precedent is set. And to your point, R1 can be built on that corner a lot, and you know, I believe one of you was a school bus driver at one time, yeah?
You're right.
I know, and you used to tell me even how bad traffic was and you'd be backed up. Well, between 4:30 and 5:30, I can't even get on my driveway, literally, it stopped. I'm, I'm, as you know, about halfway between Shainer and Jewel, the infrastructure can't handle it. Me just trying to pull into my driveway already from the way this traffic is, I've been flipped off, cussed out, all kinds of stuff, just trying to pull into my driveway, you know, and it's ludicrous, so please, think about that, too, on all this property that's on the north side of 24. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we've talked about traffic, quality of life, the residential property values, nuisance lights, glare, noise, crime, and need for the area. Does anybody have anything different, new they want to add, sir? Go ahead.
I don't know if I get the greatest information, but I, I'm about two houses from there.
Name an address for the record.
13407 24 Mile Road.
What's your name, sir? I didn't get.
Mark Corlovich.
Okay.
And I just want to concur what he just said, at 3:34 o'clock, I can't get out of my driveway. I'm three houses from Shainer, I got a big white house there, and traffic is just awful. By 4:30, yeah, you can't get out of my driveway, and that's the only way I get out of my house is the driveway that goes to 24 Mile Road. Now, if you build anything more, it's going to be a problem, a real problem, you know, traffic is awful right now, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, hi. Two for one, go ahead. Oh, okay, all right.
Hi, my name is Pam Kazak, and I am part owner in the property 53125, which is right next to the proposed gas station and car wash. And that property was home to my parents for 43 years, and now it's home to my nephew. While my parents were alive, they took great pride and care in their home, and it's a beautiful piece of property, as is all the property surrounding it. The proposed rezoning to the gas station and car wash, it's just not suitable for the corner. There's, like everyone has said, gas station one mile down the road at 23, there's one going up by Meyer, and
Per Shelby Township's master plan, this area was zoned residential for a reason.
What's your name and address?
My name is Sue Toth.
Okay.
I am the other half owner.
Oh, got it, okay.
We inherited the home from our parents, and the other home, 13555, was my grandparents' home that they built. All that property. Knocked down, not down the 419, but the 555. Okay. So anyway. Anyway, so I just think a gas station and car wash will bring more traffic to an already increasingly busy area, the fumes from the pumps I don't want to sit on my deck and look at an ugly wall while I'm sitting on my deck, and I don't think there's a wall high enough or decorative enough to block out the smell and the noise. And I'm also concerned about the value of the surrounding properties, that the value of the surrounding properties would decrease due to the project. I just, we feel that the entire project will be an eyesore and nuisance to the surrounding residents. And while we do understand that develop is, development is necessary, this project is just not suited for this area. Thank you.
Okay, make sure you both sign in. Thank you. Did you both sign in? Thank you.
Thomas Valentine, 53654 Marion Drive. I agree wholeheartedly with everything that has been said, but one thing that hasn't been mentioned, the Harris Drain is right behind the proposed property. It completely runs through our subdivision, which we are on the southeast corner of 24 and Shaner. The animals that are in there, the kids that play in that creek is immense, and to have a gas station within, I don't know what it would be, 500, 600 feet, could cause serious environmental impact, not to mention, you know, the children playing in the creek. That's all I have to say. Everything else has already been mentioned. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Valentine. Sign in, please.
Hi, my name is Dahlia Ibrahim. I live on 53057 Brianna Court. I live the corner across the street of the proposal area. I can't add anything else for all the gentlemen and the ladies there, but believe me, this is the last thing we need there. When we move to Shelby, our subdivision is called Nottingham Forest. Forests, a gas station doesn't belong into, in forests, you know? We came here for the greens, for the trees, for the silence, for the everything. I have kids. We sit in the backyard. Imagine sitting there across the street with a car wash and gas station? No, this is, will affect us the most. Will affect my kids. We can't play in the backyard anymore. My kid has asthma, they have allergies from all chemical smells. That will be horrible for us. So please, please reconsider. This is the worst decision that would be happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is anybody else? We have 170 emails, so we know where everybody's going, but, yes, ma'am, come on down.
I know everybody's talked about the different traffic and impacts, so I won't-
Name an address.
My name is Therese Alfafara, 52423 Torrey Lane, Shelby Township, Michigan. The only thing that I would say is, I walk, and I walk a lot around that area. I live in the Royal Forest subdivision, I walk around that area. It's not just the traffic, but it's the traffic and the accidents. So the increase in accidents there that I see, the potential for being hit when I'm at that corner trying to cross, it's just absolutely ridiculous. So I would ask the committee to work on behalf of the people, as was said earlier, and please turn this, this application down. And I would ask the applicant, if you were in a residential zone, would you like to have a gas station built next door to you? Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 53273 Shaner Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. My property is about 300 yards, maybe not even that far, because I'm on the south side of the Harris Drain. And when I look in my backyard to where that white farmhouse is proposed to be changed to a car wash, it upsets me greatly. My park, my backyard, everybody tells me is like a park. I've got a fire pit back there, and that's all I want to do, is sit there and listen to (whistle) every time a car goes through this stinking car wash. Everybody here agrees that this is not the place for a car wash or a gas station. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Come on down, sir.
My name is Frank Leminski. I live at 53251 Shaner, about 600 feet north of the corner. My parents built the little house on the corner, and we've lived here since 1948, when Shaner and 24 were dirt roads. Now we have pavement and beautiful homes all around us. We went from farmland to residential. We could have went, my father would have turned that corner commercial, but he went elsewhere for it, and he always wanted this to stay this way. But now we're being infringed by gas stations. All we're going to have is a lot of traffic and riffraff. When Mr. Dietz, I live right south of Mr. Dietz, when we go out to cut our grass, we have to pick trash up off our lawns every time we cut grass, whiskey bottles, and you name it. I could name some stuff I don't want to say that I picked up out there. But we want to keep this residential. We don't need a gas station, and we don't need a massage parlor. We want this to stay residential, and I'm sure all the homeowners in the area want the same thing. They didn't move out here to, they left where they were at because it was probably getting pretty bad in most places. When you go, and you go to areas in Sterling Heights and in other townships that have been there for 20, 30 years, they don't look like they did when they first started. We want to keep ours clean. We work hard keeping our houses up. You go down Shaner, everybody keeps their lawns mowed, you don't see junk laying around, okay? That's all I have to say. We want to keep it the way it is.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Darren Belial, 52833 Florence Drive, Tuscany Grove Sub. Yeah, I mean, I agree with the traffic. I have two teenage boys. I don't have to worry about them coming home late. I have to worry about them getting in and out of our sub, because between, like, say, 3:30 and 6 o'clock at night, there's nowhere to go. You can't see either way. You gotta, you're lucky if people stop to let us in and out of our own sub. And fortunately, I just had to have surgery done on my shoulder, so there's, with the medical building is on the other side of 24 and Shaner, I had to try to get in and out of there now with them trying to do whatever construction they're doing on 24, and that's dangerous itself. So we don't need any more traffic on 24 Mile Road. And I do believe when I moved in here in 88, and didn't it say like Shelby was the city of trees or the community of trees, it was on all the signs and everything? So I know just from Tuscany Grove going to Jewel Road, all those woods have been turned down now, and there's just a bunch of factories back there. So I would like to see it still be city of trees what's left. I understand business, you've got to have, you know, income tax, stuff like that, but it's time to slow things down a little bit, so.
All right, thank you. Make sure you sign in. Anybody else wish to speak? Come on down, sir.
I'm Sam Hepper from 14220 Towering Oaks Drive, so that's like, for those that don't know, it's about 24 and a half mile road, and I'm smack between Shaner and Hayes. Had no say about the Meyer or the gas station that's going in there right now, and realistically, probably have no real say about what happens at 24 and Shaner. If that gas station and car wash goes in, what I'd like the planning commission to think about is if that business fails, what is the alternate land use, and how can we accommodate whatever else goes in there? Because I see that as a high probability of failure. If we look at our environment and the push towards non-fossil fuel vehicles, I foresee lower demand for petrol. And if the EV thing doesn't happen, we're talking hybrids, which use less gasoline, and cars are going to get better and better fuel economy. I don't see where adding more gas stations is a good business proposition. Car wash, yeah, we'll probably still need those, but I think there's a high probability of long-term failure. And what do we do with that land if and when it does fail? So I agree with everything that everyone else has said. I thought I'd add that as something else to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in, sir. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Anything new to add?
I just have one question.
Yes, come on down.
Tony Hogan, 53586 Applewood, Shelby Township. I sent an extensive email, and I'm not going to regurgitate what anybody said. I just have one question of the planner.
Well, ask, ask me, and I'll ask the planner. We're good.
Okay, so I know a lot of people that aren't here that are not in favor of this. I can only imagine that the only person that was in favor of it was probably the seller. Am I correct?
I have no idea.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make a comment about the brick wall. Having lived behind a brick wall where there was a business, it does not do anything to impede noise or refuse all over the place, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Make sure you sign in. We're good. Thank you. Okay, does anybody have anything new or different they want to add? I think we've got a pretty good idea of where the public stands on this.
I'm sorry, I'll keep it brief. I wasn't really planning on saying anything, but I guess the emotion of the night gets to you. We've only been here for three years. I live at 53175 Shaner, two houses down from the proposed development. If you know the area, if you drive through that intersection, you'll often see in the fall, my son out front throwing the football to himself. You'll see my daughter in the summer, who's here, riding the lawnmower. I just don't see those things happening if the proposed development goes through. That's, you know, we came here because it's a destination, and I like to keep it a destination city, township. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, what was your name? Did you say your name?
No.
Yeah, you, yeah, sorry, for the record.
Daryl Winningham.
Thank you. I would say too, whether you've lived here three years, or Mr. Leminski, I think it was, moved here in 1948, all your voices have an equal bearing on us. It doesn't matter three years or 75 years, everybody, every voice is important for us, okay? So, does anybody else have anything new they'd like to add for the public hearing? Going once, twice? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the board. Julie, go ahead for your review.
Thank you, Chairman. So when we consider site plans and rezoning proposals for land uses such as this, we take a number of considerations. Number one is reasonableness, other items such as, one second, let me get to my notes here, the public welfare, living conditions within the area, traffic congestion, et cetera, et cetera, all the items that are of concern to the residents that they have noted tonight. So with that being said, I'm going to go back to the master plan. Our master plan, this property is zoned single-family residential, as noted. Our master plan designates this as low-density, single-family residential. So this is the guidebook that we use, our comprehensive plan that we use when we make our judgment calls on these parcels. So this is a completely contrary, the request is completely contrary to what our master plan designation for this property is. So that's number one. The second, the second issue with this is the site plan special land use standards that we apply when we review such plans. I did not hear from the applicant any addressing of the site plan special land use standards. These are eight standards that address the site plan and the proposal, what they're proposing at this site. So we do not have those addressed as well. But I think the bigger reason here, the bigger issue here is the land use itself. It has nothing to do with the site plan. It's the land use proposal for this site. I want to go back to the applicant mentioned, or the representative mentioned about the process and the procedures, and the others had an opportunity to address their site plan comments, and they had not. So under conditional rezoning and site plans, we have enough, we have enough time to review the site plan, and if the planning commission deems that this project is feasible, and it moves to the township board and is approved, there is sufficient amount of time in between there to work on the site plan issues. So that is the reason why we do the process this way for conditional rezoning and site plans. So we don't want to have them, you know, waste, waste their time and energy if a conditional rezoning is not approved. The other issue, major issue with this, is that these, according to our township engineers, AEW, the sanitary sewer master plan does not support the proposed rezoning request and do not recommend approval of the rezoning request, since it will impact the capacity of the downstream sewers. So that's another physical characteristic of the property that is not conducive to what the applicant is proposing. So those are my comments, Chairman, and again, there are, are site plan comments, but basically the issue at hand is the, the use of the property first and foremost.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, can I, Mr. Zora, you want to come back up? Got some questions based on, you heard every, what all the residents said, they brought up a lot of good issues, and a lot of good ideas, and a lot of good issues that they see with this, so. Julie just mentioned that the engineer has a comment that the sanitary sewer master plan does not support the rezoning, since it will impact the capacity of downstream sewers. How do you respond to that?
Well, that, I mean, that doesn't, that is part of why we would go back and revisit with our architect or engineer to address those issues. I did see that in the comment briefly this morning, so I, you know, that is something we would try to go back and to the drawing board and address some of the drainage issues if they, if they are indeed not sufficient.
The engineer also says, due to the several concerns above, we do not recommend approval of this rezoning request. How do you respond to that?
Again, I mean-
Same thing, you just got it today, right?
Again, I would, we would like to review, and then if we could at least narrow the issues down for the next commission meeting, that would be preferable. We can try to work with the township to alleviate some of those issues.
I'm not sure we'll get there, but nevertheless, you mentioned on your narrative that you are going to propose some landscaping berms and some screening, and now you mentioned this masonry wall. I don't think you can screen enough to keep the impact that this is going to have away from the residents in the area. That's just my opinion. I don't think enough screening is ever going to be enough for this, because it certainly, in my view, doesn't fit in with the area at all. It's, this is R1A residential, you admitted that it can be developed as R1A residential when we had a discussion, you and I, earlier, and you didn't give us a reason, as Julie said, on the special land use. So let me, let me point out some issues on that. You stated that based on your review of the neighborhood, I'm not sure who you spoke with in the neighborhood, but, "This proposal will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the neighborhood, and is an appropriate size and character in, in the appropriate location." Well, I respectfully, strongly disagree with that. You state that the proposal will have no major impact on traffic issues for the area. I disagree with that. Now, you have to meet these. These are things you have to admit in order to get special land use. We haven't got there yet, but since it was brought up that you didn't address it, I want to bring some things up.
If I might address that specific issue, we did submit-
Do you want to talk about the traffic? Go ahead.
We did submit a traffic, a traffic analysis from the engineering firm that was attached to our site plan. I didn't see a response to that in the committee meetings.
Have you driven the area? That's my analysis of the traffic, okay?
I understand, but it was, but it was included within the applicant materials.
Okay, let's, let's keep the applause limited, please, for the meeting respectful to Mr. Zora. Let me, let me go on here. You, you state that the proposal relates harmoniously with the- with the physical and economic aspects of the area. You further state there is a need for this service in the area of the township. I think surrounding you, there's enough service already there to meet the need. Now, we're not in the business of legislating competition, but I'm going to tell you, there's enough car washes and gas stations around there that I would disagree that you've met that standard. And you also claim the proposal will cause no injury to the value of the property in the surrounding neighborhoods. Again, I, I don't agree with that statement, even though that was in your narrative, not your narrative, I'm sorry, it was in the narrative provided by the attorney that quit, okay? So, that's my comments on it. So, do you have any response?
Well, again, I, I would say that the, the traffic issue was addressed within the traffic engineering report that we did submit. I didn't, I didn't see a response to that from the township in their comments, but I will review again. And I will, I will add that the, the trees and shrubbery, there is a series of, I mean, these are large evergreens that'll be year-round, so that, you know, when, in the winter, when leaves are falling, it'll still be shielded, but it's, you know, about, over, almost 100 pieces of trees and shrubbery, tall 12 evergreen, and then other shrubbery along the initial 24-mile beltway there. It does include a bike pla, a bike path that would be constructed, and I, and I believe I saw in the committee reports that a sidewalk is required to be constructed, too. So, you know, some of those are additions to what is currently there at the moment. And then, you know, other than that, we would like the opportunity to address a lot of those other issues that were raised by the, the planning committee.
One question was brought up, the hours of operation. What are you planning for that? Do you know?
We're happy to work with the township on appropriate.
Don't have any set hours?
It, it's not going to be 24 hours. I know that, at least I heard that was a concern from one of the residents. It will not be, you know, appropriate hours.
Okay, well, does any commissioners have any other questions from Mr. Zora?
Do you mind if I just add, for the record, I did hear several comments about that we don't want any more massage parlors. Just for the record, this is not that. And I, you know, I don't...
No, we're not saying you're putting up a massage parlor. Is that what you're saying?
Understood. Yeah, I didn't want the confusion to be made. This is not part of...
No, we know it's a gas station and a car wash.
I understand, but, you know, that, it's, for the residents, it's not part of the development at issue, just to, just to be clear for the record.
I think that's pretty clear. Any commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Planning commission is a recommending body, and our recommendation must be based, for this proposed change in zoning, must be based on the following: practicality of this rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land. Do the current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? Planning commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or we can table this to evaluate the information we've received this evening. Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casselli.
I move to recommend denial to the township board for conditional rezoning and site plan special land use number 24-15 Katie Dabbish, Mason Simona, 13555 24 Mile Road LLC, for 13555 and 13419 24 Mile Road parcel numbers 2307-114015 and 2307-114023, located on the northwest corner of 24 Mile Road and Shaner Road, proposing a rezoning from R1A, single-family residential, to C2 linear retail business and site plan special land use for gas station and car wash facility based on the following. Number one, the rezoning request is not consistent with the recommendation contained in the township's master plan. Number two, the rezoning application is out of scale with the recommended land use and pattern at this location. Number three, the application has not demonstrated that the property cannot be developed as currently zoned. Number four, the proposed zoning classification would have an adverse impact on the single-family homes in the area. Number five, the proposed zoning request to C2 linear retail business would be inconsistent with the surrounding development. And number six, the applicant has not addressed the special land use standards in section 6.5 of the township zoning ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Casselli, supported by Commissioner Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Casselli?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. It's denied. Now, its recommendation is for denial onto the township board. I don't know when that will come up, but will they, will the residents, will it be notified? Again, Julie, when...
Not for the township board.
Not for the board, okay. So, everything that you've said here this evening will be forwarded to the board for their review, plus all the emails we've received. So, they'll get a good, strong idea of what you feel on this project, and then the board will make the final decision when they make their, when they vote, okay? And I'm sure Lisa will carry the planning commissioner's message to the board as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Lisa.
Can we have Ms. Missage clarify what will happen from here out for the residents?
So, this will be brought to the township board. The agendas are posted approximately a week before the meeting, so you can check on the website for the township board on what meeting it will be on. I'd have, I'll have to check to see when the next township board meeting is scheduled for. If it's not the next one, it might be the one after. Again, I'll have to check the timing. But just check the website or call our office, and we'd be happy to let you know when it'll go to the township board.
Okay, that's good.
May I, I may add that our next board meeting is July 16th. Whether or not that will be on the agenda, you can check, but our, our board meeting is July 16th.
Okay, no old business, no new business. Planning directors report. Julie?
Just to note, Chairman, the July 8th planning commission meeting will be canceled at this time.
Okay. Now, does anybody else have any other business from the floor? Okay, hearing none.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Been moved. Is there a support? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thanks for coming out.